Hello, my name is Nina Milligan. I work for Highlands Council. I'm the Communication Manager and I'm also the producer of candidate forums such as this one. Really glad to have you here at Blakely Hall. Highlands Council is one of the first organizations on my thank you list. I have a few people to thank you while we start this off. I wanted to give a shout out to Lindsay Pinkston, who's sitting in the back of the room. She works for Highlands Council. She's our Community Program Manager, does a great job setting these events up for us. I also want to thank Issaquah Reporter for being a media sponsor and helping us get the word out, and Issaquah TV for recording this event so you can watch it on YouTube at a later date, and to share with your friends who were unable to come today. I worked with an expert team of Issaquah Highlands residents to put together this event. Carolyn Kennedy, who's your moderator today, Valerie Karach, and Alisa George, who is also standing in as our timer today. And now, I'd like to introduce Carolyn Kennedy, who's going to be taking you through the rest of the forum. Carolyn is a 12-year resident of Issaquah Highlands, and she's parented her kids through every level of the school district. Carolyn's two kids now attend Issaquah High School. She has been a dedicated school volunteer, serving in many roles, including on the PTSA boards and two years as the co-president for the Grand Ridge Elementary PTSA. After serving many years as a volunteer for the Issaquah Schools Foundation, Carolyn now works as their program manager. And if you would, please help me welcome Carolyn Kennedy.
Thank you, Nina. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you, candidates. Love to see so many people here. Education is super important. Strong schools do make strong communities, so like to have so many people focused on our school board. Who knew, after Nina's nice introduction, who knew that after all my work in PTSA and the foundation, that it gets me a gig grilling school board candidates? So, we gathered feedback from the community to cultivate the questions today, and each candidate will have two minutes per question. I'll alternate the order of the questions, and Alisa here will hold up time cards for you. Before we hear from the candidates, we wanted to give just a quick, high-level overview of this role of the school board. So, "The Board is created and operated pursuant to Washington State law and is the public's voice in public education. The Board sets the vision, mission, and goals for the district and monitors the district's progress toward those goals. The Board hires and evaluates the superintendent, reviews, revises, and adapts operating policies, establishes and oversees the financial affairs of the districts, and they service community representatives." This year, one school board director, Marnie Maraldo, who I saw in the audience, is not up for election. All the other seats are up for election this year. But we do have two candidates that are running uncontested, and I'm going to give them a few minutes for an opening statement. They will not be part of the question and answer part of this forum. I'll start with Ann Moore. Ann earned a degree in Electrical and Computer Engineering at UC Davis and a master's degree in Engineering Management from Santa Clara. She has worked for 12 years at IBM as a design and systems engineer. She's been an active classroom volunteer, an officer in her school PTSA's, and the District PTA Council, and a Girl Scout leader for more than a decade. She is also active in the League of Education Voters. Ann has three children who graduated from Issaquah High School and was elected to the school board in 2011. Yeah?
Thank you for inviting me here today to take part in this candidate's forum. My name is Ann Moore, and my husband and I have lived within the Issaquah School District for 30 years. We, as she mentioned, have three children that have attended our schools. As it turns out, as she said, I don't have an opponent for this seat, so instead of telling you why you should vote for me, which, please feel free to vote for me, I'm going to tell you why I do this work. This started for me when my oldest daughter was in elementary school and my younger daughters were in preschool. Our district had systemic funding inequities and couldn't provide the same opportunities as neighboring districts. I became an advocate for a state funding system that would allow us to provide those opportunities. Eventually, I saw being on the school board as a way for me to expand my advocacy for students. Finally, our district has been able to implement these changes: a seven-period schedule in two of our high schools and dual-language in two of our elementary schools. It's a start. Of course, by now, my children have not only graduated from Issaquah High School, but they've graduated from college and are employed. The state had changed the funding structure for schools, such that as a school district, we've been able to use our levy dollars to expand our program of education, not only by adding the programs I mentioned before, but by adding programs that support the whole child on their journey to graduate college and career-ready. These programs include our social-emotional supports, graduation specialists, expanded CTE offerings, higher staffing ratios for special-needs children, more nurses and healthroom supports, more guidance counselors, including mental health counselors. All of these pieces together provide the program of education our children need to launch them towards their next step in life. The key to my ability to help implement these programs in our district has been the cooperative and collaborative hard work of each school board member in conjunction with our superintendent and his staff. In my time on the board, I'm most proud that our board was selected as School Board of the Year by the Washington State School Director Association in both 2015 and 2017. Those were moments of great pride, because the work that our board does for all the students of our district was recognized on a statewide level. Today, I run for the school board seat so that I can continue to do this good work alongside my fellow board members. Thank you very much.
Next is Sydney Mullings. Sydney has a bachelor's degree in international politics from Penn State University and a master of science in human-computer interaction from DePaul University. She has spent the last 20 years working in the healthcare, financial services, and professional service industries, currently working as a senior director at Microsoft. She serves as a board member for After-School All-Stars Puget Sound. Sydney and her family moved to Issaquah in 2014, and she was appointed as an interim school board director in March 2019 to fill the seat vacated by Lisa Callen.
You stole most of my stuff. Good morning, Highlands, and thank you so much for inviting me to participate in today's candidate forum. I love that we're here in Blakely Hall, and I love that we're getting to have this conversation here in my very own neighborhood. As mentioned, I'm Sydney Mullings, and I'm a current school board member representing District 4, which includes all of the Highlands. I was appointed in the spring to a vacancy after an extensive application and interview process. I'll share a little bit more about my background. I'm a Chicago native, and I'm a first-generation immigrant from a Jamaican family. As mentioned, and I'm actually very proud today, because it's Penn State football today, so I did go to Penn State. They will beat Iowa today. And I have a master's in human-computer interaction from DePaul, which is really all about how does technology impact human beings and how do we make that work well. I have a long history of nonprofit board service, working for a really long time in Chicago on eradicating homelessness. And since moving here, I've dedicated a great deal of my time to focusing on at-risk youth, particularly in the South Sound. My family and I relocated here to Issaquah, walking distance, about five years ago. One of the reasons we selected Issaquah when we moved to the West Coast was the school system. I have two kids that are here today, and they go to, I have a 4th grader at Grand Ridge down the street, and then an 8th grader at PCMS. We've had an incredibly positive experience in the school district, and what's important to me is working to ensure that all families are having that same positive experience. I became aware of the school district through some work in equity, particularly in discipline, and since joining the board, I've spent time deeply leveraging my skills in analysis and decision-making to help collaborate with my board peers. I've been incredibly impressed with the tangible efforts underway within the district to help all students succeed. The board's commitment to equity is deep and demonstrated in programs such as dual-language and recurring community listening systems. Just this week alone, we've had a number of those conversations with city partners, with students, and with public input at our board meeting. So, I've been thrilled to be a part of the school board, and I look forward to continuing my service. Thank you.
Our other candidates today are running for school board seats in Districts 3 and District 5, and after a quick introduction, I will give each of them one-minute opening statement. I'm going to start with Harlan. Harlan Gallinger was a 6th grade math and science teacher, but as a graduate of the University of Washington School of Medicine, he now cares for sick and injured children. He has served on the Issaquah School Board for the last four years, and has also served on the Washington State School Directors Association Board, and has been an active in PTSA. Recently, Harlan began serving on the East Side Human Services Forum, and he lives in St. Mamish with his wife and two daughters. One minute?
Well, this morning, I'm grateful for the opportunity to share a bit about myself. My name is Harlan Gallinger. I'm currently the president of the Issaquah School Board. I grew up in Pierce County. I graduated with degrees in history and chemistry from the University of Puget Sound. I did participate in Teach for America 20 years ago, when it was more like a domestic Peace Corps program. And I learned really there how important advocacy for public education was, and whether I was in the classroom or not, this was going to be something that was going to be a lifelong passion for me. So, after returning to Seattle to attend medical school, and now practicing as an emergency physician, I really want to take the opportunity to spend my free time in advocating for education. You know, it's a privilege to live in this community. I have two daughters who are here today, a 6th grader at Pine Lake and a 3rd grader at Discovery Elementary. Yet, with privilege comes responsibility, and I believe that I need to do my part to invest in making my community and my world a better place. So, I hope to share with you some of my contributions over the past four years during this time together.
Our other candidate for District 3 is Minal Gassamia. Minal has a bachelor's degree in business from the University of Washington and a JD from Gonzaga Law School. She focuses her practice on family-based immigration and humanitarian relief. She co-chairs the Immigrant and Refugee Commission and serves on the Board of One America, the 2020 Levy Development Committee, and as a legislative representative for her local elementary school. Minal lives in St. Mamish with her husband and three children.
Thank you. Thank you, Highlands community, for hosting this forum. It's really nice to be here. My name is Minal Gassamia. I'm running for Position 3. Thank you for that intro. You did take all of my material, too. But I will say, you know, I'm in this race because I feel, you know, deeply connected to this community. I was born and raised in Washington, raised on the East Side. My high school played Issaquah District schools, you know, all of my upbringing, and I've been involved in the community since then. And so, I feel like my voice and my experiences will do, would be valuable on the Issaquah School Board, and I just feel, I do want to build on strength. I feel like our school district is a wonderful place, and I just want to do my part in doing much more, and also, you know, developing policy and responding to our growing community and our more diverse community, and just doing what we can to raise the level of service to our kids. Thank you.
Running for District 5, we have Suzanne Weaver. Suzanne has a BA in French Studies from Brown University and an MBA in Finance from the University of California, Berkeley. She has worked as a controller for several high-tech firms and has volunteered in many capacities in the school, district, and state levels. Suzanne is running for her fourth term on the Issaquah School Board, having served since 2007. She and her family live in St. Mamish.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I am Suzanne Weaver. I've been on the board for almost 13 years, and prior to that, as Carolyn said, I was a finance professional. We moved up here when my kids were very young, so they went through Issaquah schools together. We've been here for 23 years. And I became PTA Treasurer Extraordinaire. I served on the district-level PTA Council as president and in a number of state positions with PTA as well, state committees. I'm running again because I really have two commitments to the students of Issaquah. I'm committed to providing opportunities to all students for academic acceleration, remediation, and exploration. And I'm also committed to providing all students with the supports that they need to be successful, while understanding that the definition of success is going to be different for each student. I think we've done a lot of great work on the board and hope to do more, because apparently I'm done.
Also running for District 5 is Lena Crofts. Lena has been a social worker and a special education teacher at schools for the deaf and blind. She's also spent time working in financial management, as a forensic accountant, a licensed private investigator, and a fraud examiner. Lena is a mother of six children and has been a foster parent. Lena and her family moved to Issaquah area nine years ago.
Thank you, and thank you for Issaquah, for helping me get a parking spot and for allowing me to be here. I am running for school board because I have had a lot of kids go through this district, and I didn't have any problems. In fact, I loved the district and one of the biggest supporters until I had a disabled child as my last child. And Issaquah School District refused to serve her, according to her dyslexia. So, we, they sued us, and we had to defend ourselves, which is now six years later. And I am hearing more and more stories that are similar to mine and worse than mine. So, I am here because my conscience tells me I must do something to change, and I'm against the lovely Suzanne Weaver, who I adore, and I appreciate her service. But some of the issues have gone blind in Issaquah School District, and that's why I'm here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Okay, we're now to our question-and-answer session. Each candidate gets two minutes per response. This is not a debate. There's no naming your candidates, and there's no rebuttals. We want to be considerate of everyone's time and fair to all the candidates, so we'll be keeping things on track, and Alisa will have her time cards, and we'll just make sure that we keep things moving along. Our district has set end goals for our students, and many of our questions will stem from those goals. N1 states that "Our students will be prepared for and eager to accept the academic, occupational, personal, and practical challenges of life in a dynamic global environment." So, question 1: What are the two to three overall education goals that you would hope to accomplish during your time in office, and how would you go about achieving them? I'm going to start with Harlan.
You know, I think that, like the rest of the school board, I share the goal in making sure that every one of our students is prepared to pursue their passion. And what Suzanne said is that how we define success is really up to that student and family, and we want them prepared whether they go into college, whether they choose career, whether they pursue the military. It's really important to us that our students are well-rounded, so not only are they academically prepared, but we want them to be equipped with the social-emotional skills and the resiliency to be successful and to navigate the inevitable challenges and bumps in the road that we all face as we go through life. And so, it's not just about academics, and we're spending a lot of our investments in our levy dollars on mental health counselors. So, in the past four years, we've increased mental health counselors from five schools to 11 schools. We focus on social-emotional learning from kindergarten through 8th grade. We're spending a lot of our time now dealing with how do we best address the opiate crisis in our schools, because it's not just about drug prevention, but it's really about asking the deeper questions on why are our students even turning towards that? And so, we really want to focus on stress management, on helping students learn and be equipped to help each other, because we've heard from our students over and over again that they want to be each other's counselors and friends, but yet, we need to make sure that they're equipped with the knowledge and skills to be able to do that. And as I look forward to the next four years, what I want to see us do is to make sure that we're doing that in order, for ways, that they can really be successful and rely on each other and be able to face any challenges that they come across during their K-12 system and beyond, whether it's academic or social-emotional.
Thank you, Harlan. Minal?
To me, global citizenship really means sending, you know, the youngest members of our community throughout their different stages of public school, so kindergarten, middle school, high school, you know, sending kind children up through the system, sending empathetic kids through the system, and respectful kids through the system. And I think that all needs to start in elementary. So, when we're talking about global citizenship, we should be, we would be talking about cultural responsiveness. So, how do we make our classroom demonstrate basically who's in the class? So, no student's history gets ignored. So, students' languages are celebrated, so that diversity is celebrated. So, I think academic achievement is one part of it, and I think our school district is doing so well because we do have really successful folks academically. Harlan mentioned the social-emotional. I think that's a really big deal, and I really appreciate that starting early on, early as in kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And I just would really want to build on those programs as a goal, and to, you know, just look into best practices around the country and see what works for our community, because each community is different, and we just have to really look at who's in the classroom and how can we best set them up for success. So, I think one of my goals would be that cultural responsiveness and just building on it, and then making sure that we, our young people, are coming up through the system as global citizens. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think it's important that that statement says "college and career-ready." I think a lot of people have the impression that we're trying to send all of our kids to college, and we have a lot of amazing programs in our schools for kids who want to go to college. We have Advanced Placement. We have International Baccalaureate. We have College in the Classroom. We have Running Start, and we have very strong academics. But not, college is not the right step for every student. I personally have a child who did not go to college. It just was not something that he wanted to do. It was not a good plan for him. And I feel fortunate that we have opportunities for those kids in our schools as well. First off, we have a great career and technical education program, and we've been able to expand that significantly with the addition of the 7th period at Issaquah and Skyline High School. So, there are lots of opportunities for kids to take courses that either prepare them for potential careers or simply expose them to what those careers might entail. I was really glad that Harlan brought up the social-emotional learning piece, because I think that's important as well. We want to teach our children to be more collaborative and, dare I say it, less competitive. I think when they get out in the real world, it's more about collaboration, it's more about working together, and if we can reduce that level of competition, we reduce stress in our schools, which is going to go to a whole lot of other things that I'm sure we're going to be talking about later. So, as I say, I think getting kids ready for careers as well as college is very important to me, and I hope that we can do more of that.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, that's really loud. So, my educational goals while in office, if I'm elected, would be, first of all, safety, because without safety, there can be no education. So, bullying, drug problems, the bus situation, the mental health, inequality, racism, these are hard issues that must be dealt with. And I have talked about starting a conflict and resolution committee with the school district, because I've, as talking to parents, I've found that so many issues happen that are unresolved. So, I would like to have a committee that resolves issues from the beginning to the end, and then is transparent about all the problems and how they were solved. So, first of all, safety. Second of all, I would like to see, if services are given to some, I want to see them given to all. I don't know about you people, but I am sick of the lottery systems that aren't working for most of us. I am sick of the magnet programs that aren't working for most of us. I say get rid of those and put all of those services and the money that is given to those into each classroom. So, the neighborhood schools are the schools that even the school board members want to send their kids to. I want to see equality in the classrooms, and that means getting rid of the magnet and lottery programs. Another big thing that I have personally found with education is our special education in Issaquah School District needs to change, needs to be revamped. Issaquah School District has made a big change by getting rid of the previous director, which is huge, but so much more needs to be done here, that I'm hoping if I'm on the board, or even if I'm a citizen, if I'm not on the board, that we can all help to make changes here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Our second question. N number 3 states that "Students will live as responsible citizens." So, our question is, "How should the district address the learning needs of students from other cultures and languages?" Minal, I'm going to start with you.
Sure. So, as far as the school board is concerned, you know, we're setting, the school board is setting the goals that you just mentioned. And so, I think when we're talking about how those goals are achieved, especially when we're talking about that cultural, you know, appreciating culture, I think it's really building bridges with teachers and building bridges with the educators, and also doing, you know, going that extra mile and finding out what are the best practices when we're talking about cultural responsiveness and appreciating culture. So, I've had a number of really great meetings with teachers around the district and regional districts as well, and so there are a lot of great practices out there. There's no need to reinvent any wheels, but it's really just going that extra mile to find out what those best practices are, and then, you know, collaborate with the superintendent as well as staff and teachers, and, yeah, and adopt those best practices. And one of the big things I've realized is, you know, each classroom is different. So, the diversity makeup in one classroom may be different in another classroom, and we just really have to give our teachers the autonomy to customize curriculum, so that while the goal is in place, the means to achieve that kind of cultural responsiveness is left to the teacher. And I think that they, we have some great teachers, and they're up for the job, so we just need to give them the autonomy to do that, and also give them the best information, make sure they're really prepared. You know, we are, we are a privileged community, and we need to do what we can to prepare our teachers for success, so that they can prepare students for success. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
The district has done a lot of work around this issue, and while I'd love to just pat ourselves on the back for that, we have a lot more work to do. Over the past several years, there's been a program in place called Cultural Competency, which has been trying to teach administrators and moving down then into teachers, more about implicit bias and different kinds of things that they can do in their classrooms to make students feel more welcome and more heard. We have put on a number of programs with community partners, such as Welcome to the School District, Welcome to the American School District, I think it's called. We have, I'm going to forget what they're called, Family Partnership Liaisons, something like that, that work with our schools to help people understand how parents of different cultures, the issues that they might have. So, we've done a lot. Last year, however, we had an equity listening session with students, parents, and teachers of color, and we found out that there was a lot more to do. We listened to the experiences that they had in their schools, the good and the bad, and sadly, they were kind of more bad than good. And I think we have a lot more work to do on curriculum. We had one student of color who talked about sitting in history class, and it felt like the journey of white men going to different countries and the experiences that they had. And that's where you realize, yeah, we need, we need to do some work on curriculum. And, but, but our goal first and foremost is to make all families and students feel welcome in our district. I think Superintendent Thiele's Culture of Kindness was a great place to start. I think we have a lot more to do.
Thank you.
Yes, we do have a lot more to do. We've been in the national spotlight recently for racism, which I think has broken all of our hearts. But having so many children in Issaquah School District, I would like to acknowledge, I've seen them now, my older kids now are adults, and I've seen their friends as adults. They are spectacular people, spectacular. I think that the school district is doing an awesome job. I mean, there are always going to be little problems like we have seen, but really, our kids are spectacular, you know, and I'm talking for all of the children that I've met and seen. And those children that have problems, I have loved how the community has supported them. I've loved how the school district has supported them. So, I don't have any bad things, you know. We can blame the school district for so many problems. Instead, I think the school district is on par with this subject. And as for responsible citizens, I watched my 14-year-old daughter stop traffic on 228th, so four lanes of traffic, because an older man in the retirement home had wandered off, and he had Alzheimer's and didn't know where he was. Adults were passing four lanes, and he was in the middle of the road. They were swerving around him. My child stopped all the traffic, and I'm like, okay, I know that I'm a good parent, but the school district also has something to do with that. So, I'm proud to be in the school district, and I'm also proud to hopefully help make changes.
Thank you.
So, our primary role is to develop the policy and framework by which our district can operate. And one of the things that we did and started two and a half years ago is we established an equity policy. And it wasn't just about doing those words, but it- And it wasn't just about doing those words, but it was taking the community on this journey with us. And we did that over an 18-month process where we were in our schools, talking to students, we were hearing from teachers, we were hearing from community members at forums that we had. And it's that process that brought us to the point of where we created the framework for what it's going to look like in our district, for exactly what Suzanne has said about sort of changing and adjusting curriculum. And if you have kindergarten or elementary students, you've seen that our K-5 social studies curriculum is very different today than it was two years ago, and it's quite remarkable. Some things that we've done is, we've established a dual-language program, and it started in two schools this year, Clark Elementary and IVE. And what it does is allows our students and families to be in such a more culturally responsive and rich environment that really elevates Spanish native speakers, not just for those classrooms, but for the whole school community. And in doing that, that's step one. Step two is establishing Mandarin Choice Elementary in Simamish, because that's where the overwhelming majority of our Mandarin speakers live. So it's for us, like, these are the things that we're doing to make sure that we are serving our community in a more culturally responsive way. And, but doing it in a way that is, as I've learned, the Issaquah way, which starts with a lot of thoughtfulness, and we started these processes three years ago, and slowly move it so that it's, it's very impactful and very sustainable. And so this dual-language program that we talked about is going to articulate through eighth grade. And so they're already working on hiring the next set of teachers for that. So are we perfect, or not? But I'm excited for what we've accomplished and what we're looking to do over the next four years.
Thank you.
Okay. End number four states that students will lead healthy, satisfying, and productive lives. While that's a very broad area, it can include many of the behavioral health issues related to social-emotional well-being, including internet and social media use, bullying, drug use and vaping, relationship dynamics, et cetera. What is the role of the schools in teaching children about these topics? Suzanne, I'm going to start with you.
Okay. And that's actually really good timing, because over the last year, year and a half, we completely rewrote that end. And we used to actually have two, and one was on life management, life management, the other one was on personal awareness, personal passions, or something, I can't remember exactly. But we combined them together, and we added quite a bit of language around social media use, around mental health. Because when the ends were originally written 10 years ago, these were not important things that were at the forefront of what people were thinking about. And as we, you know, as we reviewed our goals, we realized that, no, we have to change what we're doing, we have to change what we're teaching. We've talked a lot about the social-emotional learning curriculum, which I think has been awesome, and it goes back to that point I made earlier about teaching kids to be more collaborative and less competitive. We've also done quite a lot with our last levy in bringing in more mental health counselors, more guidance counselors in general, and having more, more resources available to students when they are stressed and when they are worried about things. Social media is a whole other issue, and we've seen, I mean, kids will do stupid things, teenagers do stupid things. We did them when I was young, and when I was young, we just did them and a half a dozen people knew, and they went away. Now they're plastered on social media, everybody knows you did something stupid, and it's in the 11 o'clock news. So we are working with administration right now in finding out how we can work more of that into our curriculum and make kids understand that with the advent of social media, things that they do live with them forever, and how do they manage that in their personal lives, and how does that not take a toll on them.
Thank you. Lena?
Help the satisfying, broad lives for our youth. That's such a broad question. First of all, I think that that should be directed to families more than the education system. I think that the education system is, number one, to keep the children safe, number two, to educate. We have children, we have our own beliefs, our own religions, which are very different. And that's okay. That's why we're in this mixing bowl of America. I believe that the parents should be the one to teach the kids about porn addiction, about social media, about trolls on social media, about not getting depressed about what people say about you. I'm a good one to say that, as so much bad has been said about me running for this seat. I believe that the parents are the ones to raise the children, and we should help the parents. So the school district has been doing classes for parents. However, it's hard for the parents to find out about these classes and to actually go. I've been to a few, and there's just a couple parents there. I think that if we offer more parental support in these areas, that would be the best served. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, as Suzanne said, two years ago, we revamped and added things. You know, my job is emergency physician, and I see kids in crisis. And what, one of the things I brought to the school board is, wow, you know, we don't have anything that we're talking about regarding mental health or teaching our kids digital citizenship and social media use. And so one of our roles is, the school board is to make sure that we have adequate policies in place that our kids should be learning. And so we added those things, because ends for students means, by the time kids graduate from our system, what do we want them to be equipped with and to have learned? But it's not just about putting policy in place. We have then had retreats where we talk about, so really show us what does this social media educational process look like, starting in late elementary school through high school? And our last one, we saw, like, okay, well, that's a good start, but it's not enough. And that's our role, is to monitor progress towards that end. And we do that on an annual basis with every single policy in the district, whether it's the budget, whether it's curriculum, whether it's social-emotional supports. And that's one of the benefits of this board and the work that we do every year to make sure that our district is continually making progress, because that's what our goal is. Again, we know that we're not perfect, but we're pursuing towards ever higher places on behalf of all of our students.
Thank you.
So I think the district is, you know, uniquely situated to, you know, start these really important conversations when we're talking about social, social-emotional support, substance abuse prevention, and other, you know, social issues that our young people are facing today. And I really strongly believe that it needs to start as early as possible. So, you know, I was surprised that there were no substance abuse-related conversations happening in elementary school, because I'm kind of a product of the DARE program when I was in public school. And I thought those conversations are very important, and they resonated with me, and have, you know, have carried some of those skills and some of those tools with me throughout my life. And so when my first grade, when my first graders' teacher said, you know, we don't really have any guidance on that, I was a little taken aback. And she was just crossing her fingers that none of her students would approach her and ask her about what happened at Skyline. And so I think we can do better. I think we need to, you know, this is a partnership. I think that the most effective and sustainable solutions are the ones that are based in community. So it's not just school board, it's not just city council, it's not just law enforcement. I mean, I think there needs to be a strong bridge between people who can leverage their leadership to make changes. So I'd really like to, you know, kind of collaborate and figure out how we can best prepare our kindergartners and first graders so that when, so they have the tools and they have the knowledge, and they build on that knowledge as they move through the system, and that they're healthy and successful when it's time for graduation, and that they're taking those skills to college or career or whatever their next step is. So, yeah, I think that the district should absolutely be gearing some efforts into the youngest members of our community on social-emotional, substance abuse, social media, all of those aspects. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are already to our final question, and it's kind of a beefy one. The schools are primarily funded with tax dollars, and the school board approves the district budget. How should the board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden? Lena, I'll start with you.
Oh, this is such a long question. Can I have four more minutes, please? First of all, tax dollars. Our taxes here are so high. If you look at my website, Vote Lena, I have written a large article on bonds and levies. While I support bonds and levies usually, the bonds and levies that Issaquah School District has taken out since 2012 has been over a billion dollars. A billion dollars, and my dyslexic child was not served an education. So many other dyslexic children and disabled children have not been served. With a billion dollars, how many more billion dollars do we need to serve our children? I say, and, and when, in this article, you can go on my Vote Lena website and read this, I researched all over the internet looking for answers on the website, and I finally had to send in a bunch of PRRs to find out what interest rate we're at. Why was the 2016 bond refinanced? What interest rate were we at? The bonds, who, who were taking out the bonds? I found out the bond and levy committee are picked because of their support of the bond and levy committee. There's no dissenting people on the bond and levies committee. So so many problems with the bonds and levies in Issaquah School District need to be paid attention to and redirected. I'm all for bonds and levies if they are being used wisely. If they are not being used wisely, no, we need to stop them and redirect them. I have watched, I, I live right behind Pine Lake Middle School. Four or five years ago, they built a whole new field at the cost of, I think it was 1.5 million dollars. Then when they tore down the school, they tore down that field for another, I think it was a half a million dollars to tear it down, and then they rebuilt it again for another one and a half or two million dollars. Full football field, full soccer field that was not needed. We need to pay attention to what's going on, and we need to make sure that our money is being spent, because it's not for the kids. Our kids are going to be paying it off.
Thank you, Lena. Harlan?
So I think one of our primary responsibilities is advocate for education, and our school board does that every year, locally and district, as well as in Olympia. And we have spent the past forever advocating for more education dollars, as Ann Moore said. And one of the things we've been able to do is to get the legislature to drive funds for our teachers. And so now that we've done and addressed having teachers have livable wage, we've been able to look at what does our local enrichment levy do? And we believe that our budget should be a representation of what the community values, and it is our value statement as a community. And we've been able to really do that by saying, what does our community want? And if you look at our educational program enrichment levy that is going to be on the ballot in February, it really, you can go line by line on the different items that talk about expanded opportunities for our high school students, mental health counselors, social-emotional supports, counselors, nurses, additional special education dollars. We spend $6 million above and beyond what the federal government and the state government provides for special education. And yet, is that enough? We know not, like, not enough is, like, it'll never be enough. But our budget represents what that is. Yet, we have this responsibility to make sure it is as fiscally responsible and accountable to our taxpayers as possible, because only 28% of voters or taxpayers in our school district actually have students attending our schools. And so in doing that, what we've done in our last one is we took what the levy development committee offered us, and we looked at it very closely, and we were able to decrease that overall ask to the community by almost $7 million. And we want to use our time with the state to say, hey, so we don't believe that our taxpayers should be funding the state retirement pension and healthcare, because that's not what our voters would want to do.
Thank you, Harlan. Minel?
I think the financial investment of our community and tax dollars, I think a lot of it just needs to be an open dialogue with community. I mean, serving on the recent levy development committee was super eye-opening. And so if you're, if I'm having a conversation with somebody who's like, gosh, you know, another levy, you know, I would be able to say, hey, do you really want your kids not to have school nurses? Do you really, you know, do you believe in dual language? Do you believe on all these amazing programs? And that's where, you know, if you're investing in the levy, that's, that's what your kids are going to get. And there, yeah, it's true that, you know, some community members don't have young people in schools anymore, but let's be honest, if our schools are successful and our students are successful, our whole community is successful. And so I think this is just a real opportunity to engage with community, and it's just that education piece, and really just listing the line items, like, this is where the levy dollars are going. You know, are you, are you invested in our young people? Are you invested in our schools? I think, I think most people would agree. And again, you know, it's about community success. I just, you know, going back to just, as long as our schools are doing well and our kids are thriving and they're entering the community as, you know, really productive and successful people, then our community did well. And, and that includes investment, important investments with taxes and with levy dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think it's important, there's always a lot of community confusion about the different kinds of things we ask for. There are bonds and there are levies. And the easiest way to think of it is, bonds are for building, levies are for learning. So when we pass a bond, and Lena mentioned the last bond we passed was a half a billion dollars, it's for building new schools. And those are one-time things. We go out, we borrow the money, we build the schools, the schools happen. Levies are ongoing. Levy money goes into the general fund each year, they expire, and we go and ask for new ones. So when you see a levy on your ballot every two years, every four years, it's not incremental money. It's money that we spend each year that goes into the general fund to support our kids in classrooms. Issaquah has been extremely thoughtful about the burden that these levies and these bonds place on our taxpayers. We are actually at the, the levy that's coming up represents the lowest tax rate we've had, I think, in the last 20 years. So we're very conscious of the fact that taxpayers pay a lot of money in taxes. Harlan went through the whole process we went through on this levy, of bringing it down as much as we could without sacrificing the educational programs that we want to fund. The McCleary decision was really important for us because it did drive money into our schools, and rather than say, oh, my gosh, the sky is falling, we need so much more money, we were able to say, no, we're actually reasonably well-funded on the basics right now, and these are the things that we think you want incrementally in the levy, the seven-period day, the dual-language kindergarten, the additional counselors, the social-emotional learning. All of those are things the state doesn't pay for, but we're confident that the community wants. And we are fortunate that as, I mean, growth is a curse and a blessing, but because we've grown so fast, we have been able to keep the tax rate down because we're spreading it over more people. Yes, I see that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're to the point of closing statements. Thank you all for answering the questions, and we'll now give you each two minutes for closing statements, and I'm going to mix it up a little bit. I've been in a bit of a pattern, so we're going to have to change it up a little bit. I'm going to start with Minel.
Thank you. Thank you again for giving us the opportunity to kind of share some of our views on, on Issaquah School District and, you know, setting our kids up for success. This campaign and campaigning is difficult. It's rewarding and challenging. You know, I really love, you know, having conversations with folks in the community and really hearing what they have to say about their school experiences. And then it's also challenging when, you know, you're asking somebody, you know, please know me, understand me, vote for me, you know, there, there's certainly challenges. But the takeaway, all in all, is, is really positive, because I want to be here to advocate for young people, to advocate for members of our community, and really just make our school district an amazing place. And some of my hopes and dreams, if I am given the opportunity to serve as a director, are really, really building on equity and really bringing it down to the youngest members of our community in kindergarten and first grade. Hopefully, if we're, if we're talking about equity and our commitment to equity, you know, what can we do to support that, to support that mission? And I think that means, you know, ethnic studies and making our classrooms more culturally responsive, making efforts to hire more teachers of color, because the data shows that young people of color are going to have a better learning experience if they're, if they're learning from other teachers of color. I really want to talk about substance abuse prevention and really educating our young people so they're not out there making horrible mistakes that result in tragedy. And I truly believe that needs to start in kindergarten. And the other piece is just really building bridges with city council, with other school boards in the area, and really just, you know, coming to the table and talking about the issues that our community feels are important, and coming up with solutions in a really collaborative manner. So that's So that's me, and, you know, if you really, if you liked what you heard from me, I'd really appreciate your support in this race. Thank you.
Thank you. Harlan?
So some of the things that I've done over the past four years have been spearheading our investments in early learning, because economic research will show that for every dollar you invest in early learning, you get $7 in return. Our board adopted one of the first equity policies in the state in June of 2018, which does certainly address things like hiring more teachers of color, which we do agree is important. So our equity policy took on life this year, having dual-language kindergarten classrooms to start this year, and it's been a more culturally rich and responsive learning environment for our kids. Another investment that I've been proud to champion has been increased mental health services, so that we have licensed mental health specialists through Swedish, and our services have increased from five schools to 11 schools. Yet, all these things wouldn't have been possible without your support for our EPNO levy, again, February 2020, it will be on the ballot again. And, you know, during these four years, I've developed relationships with our local legislators, with our city councils. I'm proud to be endorsed with, by Senator Mark Mullet and Representative Lisa Callen from the Fifth, and Senator Wellman, who's the Chair of Education Committee in the Senate, and Representative Mila Tye from the 41st. So, you know, for me, public education is not something that I do for a title or to use as a stepping stone to higher office, but it's because I want every child to have the opportunity for a great education. So in addition to my work on the school board, I was appointed by the King County Council to a three-year term on the Children Youth Advisory Board, which, one of our roles is to administer the $392 million Best Starts for Kids levy, to, again, leverage more dollars into education in East King County. So I believe that I'm uniquely qualified to serve our community in the Issaquah School Board. During this most recent opiate crisis, I've been able to bring my expertise as an emergency physician to the discussion with city leaders and law enforcement in both Issaquah and Simamish. I'm on the front lines of the crisis in the ER, and further, talking about youth mental health. I get to bring my position, my perspective as a physician, who can talk about research behind adverse child events. And lastly, I'll just, time's up. I would ask for your vote to reelect me to serve another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Harlan. Lena?
Thank you. The reason why I'm running for school board is because democracy cannot happen unless you have candidates running against each other. Having two unopposed seats in our community is unacceptable, and I hope by me running and be a little, being a little controversial, helps other people in the community say, I can run too, just so there's democracy happening in our community. I am running for changes. If you want the same, this woman right here is your person. She is really a great person, and she's worked hard. If you want changes, if you want a different voice, if you want a layperson on your school board, I'm your girl. I believe in safety first, and then I believe in education for all. And education means nothing unless every one of our children can read when they graduate high school. I'm not even worried about college, because a lot of our kids go to college, a lot of our kids don't, whatever makes them happy. I want every kid to be able to read when they graduate high school. That's my focus. I want the complaint and resolution team. Without a complaint and resolution team, we have chaos with parents that are unhappy and children that are lost, mentally ill, not getting answers, getting bullied, dropping out of school, sexually abused young women who have to feel like they have to petition on the street to get awareness for their plights. There are many problems that we need a complaint and resolution team for. We do need to stop bonds and levies that are mismanaged. True, we need bonds and levies, but we need to stop the mismanagement. We need full transparency on those as well. Special education is very undervalued in this district. Out of the county, including Seattle, Tacoma, these poor, poor areas, our school district contributes the least amount of money to special education.
Thank you, Lena.
This must change. So thank you, and I hope you vote for me.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I get to wrap it up. Okay, that's only fair since I've been around the longest. I want to thank all of you for being here and for being engaged. This is actually a really good audience for a forum such as this. I have been on the board for almost 13 years, and I would have to say, I am running on my experience. I have a lot of relationships established within the district and the administration, within the community. I've served on the volunteers for Issaquah Schools for 15 years, as treasurer, of course. And I have relationships in Olympia. We go down every year to advocate. I'm pleased to say that I'm endorsed by all six of the legislators in the Fifth and the 41st. These people know me, they trust me, and when we go down to advocate for something for the Issaquah School District, they will listen to us. I have been around the longest. I've had the privilege of working with a lot of different board members. I currently work with four of the most amazing people around, and I look forward to doing that again. I look forward to moving, moving forward positively and collaboratively. We have, we've talked a lot about the different initiatives that, that we have implemented over the last several years. We still have a lot of work to do, I would say specifically, on social-emotional learning, on equity and cultural competency. We've just implemented the seven-period day. We've just implemented the dual-language program, so there's a lot more to do there. I'm very proud to have served on this board. I'm proud that our professional organization has voted us a board of distinction for the last 10 consecutive years. We're going for 11, we'll find out in November. So thank you very much again. I hope you vote for me, and I appreciate your engagement.
Well, let's give another round of applause. Thank you very much to each of our candidates for coming today. So put in the plug, be sure to vote November 5th.